This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, March the 11th. Please stand for our invocation led by Pastor Tony Legere, Chaplain of the Mobile Police Department, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning. If I might impede upon protocol, I know you've all been wondering, but this is my celebration of my first full year serving the city council. And I want to say thank you very much as the Chaplain of Mobile Police Department. It's an honor to be here. Thank you, Mr. Lassiter. Let's pray. Our Father, we do give you thanks today here at the gates of our city, and we humble ourselves before you. We pledge even in these opening moments to be servants and stewards of what you entrust to us. We pray that what we do may be done as unto the Lord. We pray for your favor in our time together. In Christ's name, amen.
Roll call. President Small, Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn. Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds. Councilmember As.
Here.
Member Woods.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
We have a nice crowd here this morning. I'm going to keep the rules short and simple this morning. I think most everyone understands what they are. This is a business meeting. We expect everyone to abide by our rules, which are, please turn off your or silence your devices. If you come to the podium to speak, we ask that you give your name for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. At the end of two minutes, you'll hear the buzzer, and that's your indication to wrap things up so that you can then take your seat. Councilmembers are able to ask questions of anyone who does come to the podium, and we will take them as they come. Other than that, we just ask there not to be any undue applause or conversation in the auditorium so that none of the speakers are interrupted. All right, with that, we're going to turn our meeting over to Ms. Carroll. Thank you.
Approval of minutes, February 25th and March 5th.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Communications for Mayor Stimson.
Good morning. It's good to see everyone here today. Thank you for coming. I want to announce, have a couple of announcements and then a couple of proclamations. The first announcement is about a household hazardous waste event. We do these on a periodic basis. But it's Saturday, March 29th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. It will be at the Seals Community Center. This is the latest series of free events. There's no registration required, and it helps Mobileans safely respond and discard hazardous items, sanitation crews, which we can't collect during our routine service, which includes automobile fluids, aerosols, batteries, fluorescent tubes, paint, cleaners, pesticides, herbicides, and fertilizers. In 2024, we collected 79,000 pounds of materials and kept this kind of material out of our landfills. So if you have these type of items at your house, please bring them to the Household Hazardous Waste Event, which would be Saturday, March 29th, at the Seals Community Center. The, we have our ARPA 2024 Community Service Award. I want to recognize an incredible Mobilean, Horatio Wilson. Horatio Wilson, if you can stand, please. Yeah. He's a Mobile native. He's a Mobile native, 40 years at Scott Paper. Married 40 years, with three children. Five years ago, he started volunteering with Mobile Parks and Rec Department. He averages 300 hours of work a year, volunteer work a year. He's a constant presence at events, and he's made a tangible impact on our youth. Horatio recently received recognition by the Alabama Recreation and Parks Association. And at this time, I'd ask Gary Thomas, Volunteer Coordinator for Mobile Parks Rec Department, to share more. Mr. Thomas?
Yep. Mr. Mayor, Council, good morning. Gary Thomas, Mobile Parks and Recreation. Recently, I was pleased to have nominated Mr. Horatio Wilson for the Alabama Recreation and Parks Association 2024 Community Service Award. This prestigious award was recognized by individuals who demonstrate exceptional dedication in providing leisure services and recreation at the local, state, and national level. After carefully considering, I firmly believe that Mr. Wilson has outstanding contributions and commitment to the community and the city of Mobile that made him the ideal candidate for this award. Mr. Horatio's contributions to the Mobile Parks and Recreation are remarkable. Are totaling over 1,500 volunteer hours in the last five years. He's played a key role in the success of the NPRD Youth STEM Program, providing guidance and support that has improved academic performance and self-confidence in our children. Horatio's reach extends beyond programs. He's actively involved in various community events, from cultural festivities and health fairs. His leadership inspires others to step into the leadership roles, creating a ripple effect of positive change in the city of Mobile. So without further ado, I would like to present the Alabama Recreation Parks Association 2024 Community Service Award to none other than Mr. Horatio Wilson.
If I could, I'd just like to say thank you, Gary, for nominating me for this award, and thanks for everybody who voted for me. And thanks, the NOLA STEM Program, for allowing me to inspire some of the young kids in the city of Mobile to be, to go forward and be successful in life. Thank you.
Thank you. And it's great to see you all here today. Thank you so much, Mr. Wilson, for all you do in our community, as well as the city and the state. So thank you. It's great to see you.
Madam Vice President.
Yes, sir, Mr. Davis.
I would just like to also thank Mr. Wilson. I thank Mr. Wilson, you are, I thank Mr. Wilson, you are a shining example to all of our citizens. Not, not all citizens can serve in political office, but all can volunteer, all can act to help their communities. And you're just a great example to us all. Thank you so much for your service.
Mr. Penn?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Mr. Wilson, I also want to join in with my colleagues. Thank you so much for your service to our community, to volunteer your time. I tell people all the time, that's, that's more than giving money, you know, because you can't get time back. And so thank you so much for serving our young people and giving to our community. So hats off to you, and, and hopefully more people will join in and serving and volunteering in our recreation centers and in any place that serves our young people. Thank you again.
Okay.
Sir, Mr. Mayor?
I have a few more remarks. Okay, I also want to remind everyone that we have a gun violence town hall meeting being put on by our Public Safety Department and its Community Advisory Panel. It's Thursday, March, this Thursday, March 13th. It'll begin at 5:30 at Revelation Missionary Baptist Church. It's a critical conversation, need input from the community, and from young people and from families. So please join us on Thursday, March 13th. Have two proclamations. The first one is for AmeriCorps, and if Benjamin Lightner Franklin Robinson could come to the podium, please, if they're here. Yep. While you're coming to the podium, I'll be reading the proclamation. The proclamation reads, "Whereas Congress established AmeriCorps over 30 years ago to unite national service programs, strengthen communities, and expand opportunities in education, careers, and civic participation; and whereas AmeriCorps leverages public and private resources to support local data-driven solutions; and whereas 200,000 Americans serve annually through AmeriCorps and AmeriCorps seniors at nonprofits, schools, public agencies, and faith-based organizations; and whereas national service fosters partnerships, strengthens communities, increases taxpayer return on investment; and whereas AmeriCorps unites people across backgrounds to address critical issues, build relationships, and promote resilience; and whereas AmeriCorps members and volunteers improve lives, strengthen communities, and express civic engagement; and whereas AmeriCorps Week honors their service and encourages more Americans to join in making differences; now therefore, I will, Ms. Stimson, the 108th Mayor of the city of Mobile, do hereby proclaim March 9th through March 15th as AmeriCorps Week in the city of Mobile. Congratulations."
Thank you, Ms. Stimson.
On behalf of the United Methodist Institute of Mission in AmeriCorps Districts, we'd like to thank you for this proclamation, and we appreciate the service that you allow us to provide in your community.
I'll just read the other one from here. It's American Red Cross Month, and so the proclamation attends, I think, only Kelly Hodges. Yes, if you would come forward. Yeah. And Shonda. Yeah. Okay. She's wearing another hat. Okay. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas the South Alabama chapter of the American Red Cross serves people facing emergencies every day, providing vital assistance to those in need; and whereas embracing the diversity of our staff, volunteers, community, and the people we serve is essential to the mission of the American Red Cross; and whereas the South Alabama chapter is powered by more than 470 dedicated volunteers and generous donors who, over the past year, have made a profound impact by responding to more than 430 disasters in our community, providing nearly 1,500 critical community services to members of the military, veterans, and their families, holding more than 210 blood drives and installing nearly 1,000 free smoke alarms; and whereas the American Red Cross continues to be a beacon of hope and a source of strength, compassion, and humanitarian aid in times of crisis; now therefore, I will, Ms. Stimson, the 108th Mayor of the city of Mobile, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2025 as American Red Cross in the city of Mobile."
I'd like to thank the mayor, all the city council members, and all the community members for allowing the American Red Cross to be here for over 140 years, providing services to our community. Thank you.
Madam President, that concludes my remarks.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Carroll?
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Public hearings today. It's a public hearing to declare the structures at 2351 B Dixon Lane, 2906 Knoll Street, 1339 Basil Street, 400 Lexington Avenue, 1509 Alba Avenue, and 4730 Knight Drive. Public notices in order to demolish them.
These are public hearings. If there is anyone in the audience who would like to speak to any of these as red, please come to the podium. Okay, since there are no speakers, we will move ahead and declare that public hearings are closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council.
Why don't we move forward first with the names that are listed, and then we could move to waive the rules for the immediate consideration of allowing another?
We're not going to waive the rules first. We have to waive the rules first.
All right, let's, do you want to have a motion?
I move to waive, I move that we waive the rule requiring speakers speaking on non-agenda items to register beforehand with respect to two speakers this morning, one speaking on behalf of the transit workers and one speaking on behalf of the wave management. Each speaker will have three minutes. There will be one speaker per side.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there has been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Any all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, rules are waived. If you would, Ms. Carroll, why don't we do the speakers that had already signed in first, and then take the last? Okay.
Reggie Hill?
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. To the citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, greetings. Reggie Hill is my name. Before I begin, I want to express my condolences on the records for the Smoots family. Just a little over a week ago, Mr. Orlando Smoots Jr., resident of District 2, was murdered at the hands of teen gun violence. Excuse me. May those who love him be encouraged in this difficult time, and may he rest in power. I rise today to continue narrating another episode of As the Plaza Turns. In this moment, I'm reminded of a sentiment offered by Dr. King, which alludes to a bootless man somehow having to pull himself up by his own nonexistent bootstraps. This idea is rendered for sure in two ways. Here, first, and how we apply our rules, particularly as is observed in Section 2.62 of the Mobile Municipal Code. And second, plainly put, how we use taxpayer resources. To ostracize, target, ignore, and circumvent true citizen participation is one thing. But to do so while intentionally forcing Mobileans to consume two decades of avoidable debt, that's, that's, that's wow. Two weeks ago, during a non-streamed committee meeting, our municipal court judges expressed extreme irregularities with our city's legal department. Such inconveniences have inevitably overwhelmed our court with excessively high levels of dockets and caseloads and unintentionally weaponized the judicial branch of our local government on too many occasions. Next week, we'll have to discuss the harm of retaining third parties. We saw Mr. Simpson praise last week the Byrne Foreman Law Firm as they ushered in us taking our $250 million in debt. Well, there are a lot of other issues that kind of connect to this group as well, dealing with planning, dealing with zoning, dealing with the UDC code. I think this is something that we need to revisit. We see sometimes when Mr. Woods in these same meetings is wondering how these ideas will not, excuse me, same planning commission meeting, wondering how these ideas does not come back to this body for a final vote. That's something my good friend from District 4, Mr. John Williams, agreed with me on when this first came to this podium. How is it that we're going to grant these boards the authority to determine how we zone? Grant these boards the authority to determine how we plan and how we redevelop in our city? So time does not allow us to really get to the idea of all these things that are on here. I hope that we're going to consider, there was talk today about the theater. With $250 million available dollars, we really could redesign, excuse me, yeah, redesign what exists and create what was already there, and then add the theater and probably have some money left over. There's a lot of things that we could do here that I believe if we actually allowed the citizens to participate in the process, it would be done differently. I want, I want to, to also highlight this idea with this debt. When we began investing back into our people, I believe that's where we'll see the best return for the city of Mobile. But I know, I'm not going to carry on, Mr. Gregory, we'll continue this next week. Thanks for being on the floor.
Jim Walker?
Is Mr. Walker in the audience? Okay, he's not here.
Now we'll have speakers from the wave. Oh, I'm sorry. Before we have the speakers from the wave, Sabrina Mast regarding ordinance 34004 and 01440 Resolution.
Good morning, Sabrina Mast. Yes, I first want to address the issue on the lodging tax. Again, I come standing before the council and the mayor's administration saying I am totally against the lodging tax, as many, many of the citizens of Mobile are against the lodging tax. What good does it do to keep taxing the citizens? We do not see any resorts in our neighborhoods, in our districts, predominantly the black districts. We don't see anything. Taxation was out without representation is all we're seeing. Why continue to tax the citizens? You don't put yourselves in a debt, building projects and designing things, then go turn around and ask to increase taxes. That's ludicrous. Mobile is in debt, going to get in debt, may get in debt, because now you want to put lodging taxes. Well, after the lodging tax, what other taxes are going to have? And if we look at the news, as we all should, and I'm talking about the national news, even the president said we may be facing a recession. So even in that note, you still want to put a tax on lodging? And the citizens? It's wrong. It's real easy to sign that piece of paper, but it's not easy for us to watch you sign that piece of paper. It's terrible. And then I want to move on to this issue about the beavers. First, you kill the doves, now you want to kill the beavers. Well, then who's going to get killed next? I mean, this is stupid. Why don't, if you're going to do these things, get some habitation for these animals. And all of a sudden, why is all of a sudden this is a beaver issue? Now it's contracts, more money, more contracts, more people. We're against all of that. Read the blogs, read the news, read Fox 10, Latinop. All the citizens are saying they are against every single thing I am standing here talking about. But again, you were signed that piece of paper in the black ink because you think you all got the power. You do. We have no say-so in this council. For three and a half years, every single thing that myself and other citizens have came, taxpayers have came and said, don't do, you have done. But that's okay. August 2025 is right around the corner.
Now we'll have the waves, speakers from the wave.
When we waived the rules, we allowed for two speakers to come this morning who had not signed in previously. One will be from, I believe, the union, and then another speaker would be from management of Wave Transit. Why don't we, if you'd like to come forward. And be sure to give us your name and title so that everybody knows who is who. One, one speaker per, one speaker. You're only one, but we don't need a gathering at the podium, so just, okay. Just one, one speaker. Okay. I, I believe we see plenty of folks here who are here on your behalf as well. So we see you here today, but we just don't need everybody standing at the podium, is all. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Antoni Maven. I stay at 1059 Beverly Hills Circle West in Mobile, Alabama. I'm the Transit Union President. Been Transit Union President for over 15 years now. We have several issues that's going on within the transit system. First thing I want to bring to you guys' attention is, since December of last year, the city transit system has had 11 ULP charges, unfair labor charges that they didn't have this trans there. All the charges right here, if you would like a copy of them. Secondly, drivers' safety. Passengers is threatening drivers, assaulting them. Whenever the drivers have an assault against them, the management company always states that it's the driver's fault, not the, not the passengers. Drivers are forbidden to call the police whenever anyone attacked them or anything like that. They have to call dispatch, and dispatch have to contact the supervisor. The supervisor forbid that they need someone to come out to look at them, then they cannot call on their own as far as police. We do not have restrooms in certain areas of the city for the drivers to use. Matter of fact, Highway 45, Route 5, Crotown, Route 10, and Plateau, Pritchett, Route 16. If they don't use the bathroom at Pritchett Hub, not Pritchett, they don't use the restroom at the Gem and O, when they get out to the side of Pritchett, there's no restroom. Lighting within the mall at early morning, no lighting in the mall for the drivers and passengers, including at the Pritchett Hub. Pritchett does not provide any light because they say we don't provide any service for them, so they won't even put the light on for our guys to use the restroom or be able to be protected. Management and supervisors, the majority of the time, does not answer the radio whenever needed. The drivers are disciplined. Even if the management is wrong, they still discipline them that they made a mistake and that they need to fix it. Rules change daily. There's a rule change every day within the organization, meaning you may say you can park outside of the window of this bus this day. The next day is changed depending on who the person is. We also being attacked. Man, I have many experts. We also being attacked and also being attacked for, just like today. The ones that called off and had whatever blue flu, they are being told they better have a doctor's excuse or they will be disciplined accordingly. Also, management, whenever it's called for a meeting, we are never able to meet one-on-one. It always got to be an attorney present. Waste of money. Also, whenever, we have, we don't have open door policy with the GM. We have to ask for a meeting, then he decide whether or not he want a meeting, then he'll turn around and tell us to go to lower management, even though it need to go up to him. We have newer buses on the pair of transit side. They are not giving out. Drivers are driving buses without heat on them and things like that. And we have new, and they don't want to pass them out because they say that they possibly would be in an accident. Trip houses in this, in this maintenance area. We have a roof that they just not repairing, started last week, but last several months, the roof was leaking so bad, it was leaking on the pile of electricity boxes, and they just put a rope around it. It's very sad there how things and how we're being treated around at this, at the city and for the transit system.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Can you give us your name and title one more time so that we all?
Antoni Maven, the Transit Union President.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Yes.
Do you want to use the questions now or wait until both sides?
The problem is, is that if we have questions one way or the other, they'd both be standing here in, in. My question was of the administration. He said, Pritchett Hub, are we talking about the transit system that the city of Mobile built back in, what, 12, 10 or 12? When we built that out there, is that what he's talking about? We built that facility out there?
I'm not familiar with the facility he's referring to, but it's in the city of Pritchett?
Yes, and it was built, you guys built it, you guys used the numbers from Pritchett to build it. And it was supposed to be an agreement between Pritchett and, and the Wave Transit to make sure that it was maintained. That building has been locked up for the last three years. Only thing the bus do is pull up, drive passengers off, and then dis, display. So it's not being used at all. It's just sitting there locked up.
The next question is, who owns the buses? I thought we owned the buses.
City of Mobile.
The, if the city owns the buses, then we have some responsibility as far as the buses leaking and no heat and all of that stuff? Because we don't?
No, not on the maintenance. I think he's referring to a facility, though, not a bus.
Well, it was both. Facility had a roof leaking inside it, and also the buses are leaking inside of those, including, we have some over the mouth vans don't have no heat. Drivers having to drive around with no heat in advance.
So does maintenance go to the, the management company?
Everything goes to the management company.
Everything goes to the management company. Okay. My biggest concern, and I appreciate you guys coming down here today, but my biggest concern is that without you guys on the street driving, you're crippling the people that mailer in my district. The routes that I saw today that are shut down are Spring Hill Avenue, Plateau, and Broad Streets. Those are in the heart of District 2. And in those places that are in the heart of District 2 are places where people depend on the transit system. So I need you guys driving where we don't, where, where we can have better results from the people. This happened, well, we, we never had you guys stop before, but we've had the routes cut before, and it drastically affected how we operate in the city. So we need to find a way to get you guys back out on the streets driving. Now, how we get to that, I don't know, because the only leverage this council has is the contract with the management system. That's all we have. We don't have, we don't have operating authority over them whatsoever. We can't direct them, but the only leverage we have is the contract. So my hope is to find a way to get you guys back out on the street. I'll have a few questions after I hear what they have to say. So you might want to just, we need to know who owned what first.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Penn, did you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Vice President. And thank you, Mr. Maven, for coming down and giving me a call on yesterday as well and sharing your concerns. And thank you to you all and the service that you provide our city and the rest of the county as well. Couple of questions. You said that the city of Pritchett Hub, you say y'all drop off?
We drop off and pick up, but it's supposed to be a facility where the drivers can use the restroom and things like that, but the, the and things like that, but the, the place been locked up for like three or four years.
You stated that the, the, I guess the representative from the city of Pritchard said you don't serve if you dropping off?
Basically, what I'm understanding, because we have a labor management meeting, I talked to the management team, asked them, can they reach out to Pritchard, and asked them to open up the hub for allowing the drivers to use the restroom. They told us they don't have anything to do with that. So basically, my drivers are having to try to use the restroom up in Pritchard Mall, which there's not a lot of places in that area other than Franklin Clinic. And then when it's closed, and after hours, they cannot use the restroom.
But you are serving, because the statement was, the representative said you're not serving their citizens, but you are serving.
You're serving it, yes.
Because you dropping off.
Well, actually, what happened transpired back in 2016, when the Crosstown route was cut tremendously, and the Plateau bus was cut out of Eight Mile, then that was three routes that was cutting in the city of Pritchard. So basically, the city said, you guys built that facility, we're not opening it, because we not receiving the service that we used to have. So basically, all we doing is just going to the end of the line, deadline, and turn back around and go back to Mobile side.
Second piece, I know that from the administration side, we own the bus, but I'm sure we have a management contract with that company, correct? For them to provide maintenance on the bus to make sure the facility is in check. Do we have a contract to make sure that those guidelines are manifest, and someone is going to verify that they're doing those type of services?
Saw one contract, same, same contract, whole, one total contract, just wholesale. So we own, as, as Councilman Carroll said, we own the, the buses, but we can't direct in any way, shape, or form otherwise. You got to remember that they're unionized, we're not allowed to collectively bargain in that way, and we don't have any supervisory control over the management company. It's purely within the contract itself.
Okay, so in the, in that particular contract, it doesn't state that the buses have to be at this condition, the facility have to be in this condition, and receiving the, these funds?
It doesn't go into that state of detail, no, it does not.
Yeah. The reason why I'm asking that, because I try to figure out what kind of control we have. Hearing the, the concerns, I know we're going to hear the other person, and we're not here to negotiate. We can't do that legally right now in this, this moment. But hearing your concerns, those are concerns for me. They're hearing that you're getting on the bus, and you, and, and moments that you're getting attacked, and you got to go through five steps. And I mean, of course, we're going to hear the other side as well. But hearing that, that's concerning. You shouldn't have to go through that, you shouldn't have to deal with, through that. And, and, and you should be protected driving and serving the citizens of the city of Mobile. You should be able to do your job. And we want to figure out what ways that we can do to support it. I'm sure we're going to hear that information, and as a council, we can work with the administration and figure out what ways we can do to support that. But I stand, and, and again, hopefully, the, the, the people that we talk to on the administration side of the wave should stand and say the same thing, that y'all have excellent facilities. We're giving this amount, that y'all should have the best buses, and y'all should be protected when you're on the buses. And I stand with that, and whatever I can do to support, I would do that.
I'm going to say one more comment, and I'm done. There's no check and balance at the Wave Transit system. Even though we got a contract, there's no one from the administration to come down to check to see what's going on. And that's one of the biggest issues. That's why we at where we at today.
Ms., Madam Vice President? That, that was my next question. Who within the administration monitors the contract with the wave? And also, who makes sure, sure that our infrastructure, since we own the buses, are being taken care of? I mean, we're not just giving them a bus to run into the ground and do whatever they want to do with it. I mean, that's just like renting a car. If I rent a car from Hertz and I damage it, I got to replace it or, or fix it. So who's managing that to make sure that the quality of our, 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 our resources are taken care of?
Joe Snowden is the point of contact with the city administration.
My question was, that's the point of contact. Who's managing it? Who's actively managing it to make sure that they're meeting their contract, contractual obligations? Who's managing it?
Yeah, what I want to say is, so, good question, Councilman Carroll. So Mr. Snowden has consistent contact with the administration of the wave. And so that's, that's, it's back and forth. It's not a one time a year. It is a consistent communication. There's a request for needs, a request for maintenance, things of that sort. From time to time, you all even see, you'll see agenda items that come along on your agenda for maintenance, for improvements, things of that sort. So that communication comes from the leadership at the wave to Mr. Snowden. He communicates that accordingly.
The last thing I saw was the purchase of a new bus, but I have not seen anything over the last two and a half years about maintenance and maintaining our property. I mean, just like we maintain our police cars, who's maintaining our buses?
Yeah, yeah.
That's my question.
Good question, and we'll be able to, we'll be able to get you those details. Mr., once we're able to talk to Mr. Snowden, we can talk to you about the maintenance and the facilities as well. When I say facilities, I don't mean the actual building, I mean the, the fleet. So we're glad to get you that information.
The other thing is safety of drivers. If a driver is being attacked or, or touched or hit on a bus, and they're told that they can't call the police on an assault charge, that's a problem. So, so I, I, I don't understand that either. If, if, if they can't do that, then, then their rights are being taken away from them as far as public safety and protection of their own personal, their own personal person. So I'm not understanding that if they cannot call the police or report it.
So that's the first time that we're hearing of that, just like you heard of today.
Okay, but I did hear you say that, correct?
Yes, and that's correct. And one of the issues with that is, the infrastructure bill that was given money as far as the public transportation to protect the drivers, and it's the management team supposed to put up barriers and things like that to help protect these drivers. They want to use that money in other places, so what they're doing is, they have to report to FTA about these different situations. But if, if the situation never arise, then it's never written down, then you don't have to send it to the FTA. You can use that money for something else. It's always another way of misusing the money.
The, I'm, I'm still talking to the administration and all legal people here. Their contract, we need to know what's in their contract when it comes to life safety and safety issues. If that, if that negates their contract, or if that is a qualification for any type of correction to the contract.
So two things, one, I can tell you that that's not something that we dictate, but what we'll do is, it's a public document. We're more than happy to provide the council with that and actually walk through it with you. Mr. Snowden and I can sit down and walk through it with any council member who wants to go through it in painstaking detail. But, but the public safety aspect of it, as an employer, that is not on you as a council, that's not on the administration, because we're not the employer. I, I think, we say that often, and I know you as counselors understand that, the city is not the employer for the people at the wave. And I say that, one, for full transparency, so we don't get into the day-to-day personnel issues. And then secondly, as far as the contract is concerned, there are different pockets of money. There's a city contribution that you all vote on, but there's also the corresponding federal funds, which we have no control over. And then we, so we're having two different conversations in the same gambit, but I want to make sure that I'm pointing that out for you. But we're more than willing to walk through that contract with you. And, and if the council sees fit to make changes going forward, that's a conversation that we've got to have, because separate and apart from this conversation, there is a, a funding, an escalating funding issue that's separate and apart from what's going on today, but that is forthcoming, and that's separate and apart from this.
Well, I, I appreciate, so there, we can amend the contract to put public safety into it, or ask the management authority to make sure that there's adequate public, adequate protection on the buses for the drivers?
You, you could, you could, but I tell you this, I would not advise doing so unless, unless you know that there is a legitimate problem that the city itself is facing. You will not, you don't want to delve into that, because you're going, you're delving into the employer, employee aspect of things. Right now, we've only heard, you know, one version of this. You want to make sure that you gather all the information, and may even want to do your own independent investigation. In no way, shape, or form should anyone be telling employees they shouldn't be calling the police.
Agreed.
That's, that's not acceptable.
One last thing, you said escalating financial issue. I, I think we need to let the public know what our contribution is to the Wave Transit system and why we're so concerned. Our contribution to the Wave Transit system is $10 million. That's a big number for us not to be concerned here about the driver's safety, public safety, the buses, and everything else right now. And it's a real, even bigger concern, in fact, that we're not out there on the streets driving. I mean, we have people stranded who need to go to the doctor, need to go to jobs, who may be on oxygen and need all kinds of resources. But they're stranded right now because we're not driving. We need to correct that, and we need to consider who we're stranding. A lot of those people look just like me, look just like you, but we've got them stranded. So I think that we need to find a way for you guys to get out on the street real quick.
Any other council members? Mr. Woods?
I do want to, so, Mr. Carroll's 100% right in that we, we as the city contribute a substantial amount, the largest contributor in the metro area. And, and if you may remember it, I think, I don't think Mr. Carroll was on the council at the time, but he's aware that not only does this city contribute a large amount in order to help the citizens, but the city went a step further in making up the shortfall that was not contributed by the other municipalities and our other governmental partners. So the city does more than its part in making that contribution in that $10 million and above even.
But, I'm sorry, but one, one last thing, though, is that we, I must remind everybody that with the other cities not participating, previous council cut those routes to those cities. Chickasaw, portions of Pritchard, the long routes out the Cottage Hill Road, those routes were cut. And even some routes within the city were cut at the time that was when I was on the council in my first term. So we need to remember all of those things. So we're not, our service range is not as large as it used to be based on the contribution that we're given. But those numbers changed because of ridership and the way that the, those, that formula works. So, but the people that are riding the buses, we need to be serving them. We don't know what unintended consequence that we're causing with this slight flu that everybody has. We don't need people that really need us to be without service.
Mr. Penn?
No, I just want to just join in with my colleagues. Again, most people don't, you know, I don't, I don't share the story quite often, but when I was a kid, my mother had to ride, ride the wave to get to different places. She had me when she was a teenage mom, and she provided that service, taking her to work, to work her way to, to buy herself a car, but she needed those services. And it was in District One, of course, that those services were provided. So I understand that need, I understand that service that's provided, and that's why I want to thank y'all so much for the service that y'all provide. I think they deserve a big hand as well. Can we give them a big hand for the work that they give to our, our city and our community? And I think a lot of people don't know that when you charter a city, and one of the things is you read a city and all the things, is to serve our citizens, to make sure they have the resources that's provided. And this is a part of it, that transportation side, and making sure that District One and all the districts have all the service that's needed. So whatever we need to do to figure this out, we need to make it happen, and we need to have, need to make it happen quickly.
I just got one more coming up, done. All I ask is that when management's sitting in here right now, don't be retaliatory towards my people, because they had to stand up and stand out today. And it is going on, and it is being said, I do not want anyone suspended or fired for speaking on their freedom of rights.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you. Appreciate you coming down, and just a reminder, this morning, we were made aware of the fact that the buses were not rolling, and that is why we decided to waive the rules so that we could hear from both sides what is, what is happening. Here at the council, this is not the negotiating table, but what our hope is that by hearing from the union as well as the representative from the management, that we can provide some incentive for negotiations to get underway and to resolve some of the problems that are being brought to us today. Who is the speaker from the management? Do we have that? Or is he here? Oh, please come down, sir, if you would.
Good morning, Preston Johnson from the Wave Transit System. I am the general manager.
You're the general manager?
Mm-hmm. So there were a lot of issues that, that were brought forth. We do have policies and procedures in place. Actually, with the maintenance of the buses and all that stuff, Mr. Maven himself is the union president, and he's lead mechanic of all that stuff. So in order for me to address each one, I would like, I would like a chance to address each, each problem that they're having, but I will say that they are not all true. And we do not retaliate.
Did you want to, do you have more that you would like to address while you're at the podium, or do you want us to?
Well, everything that, everything that Mr. Maven was speaking on has been addressed with Mr. Joe Snowden. I've provided him with all the information that we have at this time, and if anybody has any questions, I'm, I'm willing.
All right, is there?
Madam Vice President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Reynolds?
This shouldn't be litigated, obviously, in the public. This, this should be resolved in some sort of way, and unfortunately, Mr. Snowden's not here, because I know he'd be right on top of trying to find some resolution. But the way I see it is, we give Wave Transit $10 million a year. It's budgeted for 2025, and currently, these people are not on our streets, picking people up. So I hope you can bring this to resolution some way, somehow. I'm not saying everybody's right, everybody's wrong. But when you come to our legislative body, and you know, now it's sort of in the public eye and it's spectacle, draws question to me of, what are we doing? Where's our $10 million going to? I mean, this is a substantial amount of money to our taxpayers. So I, I'm hoping that you can resolve this matter in one way or another, your organization.
Well, we're, we're willing to resolve whatever issues that, that they have. We don't have a problem with resolving issues. Actually, I did.
I'm sorry, I, I'm not meaning to resolve everybody's issue. I'm saying, resolve the issue of the buses not being on the street. That's what I, that's what my concern is, that we're paying this money, we want the buses on the streets.
Exactly, I do too, because we have a duty and an obligation to serve this community. And right now, there aren't, just as Mr. Carroll said, there are people out there that are stranded because we don't have any buses out there. I woke up this morning too, to this surprise. I was not aware of this, so, and speaking here today, I was not aware that they were coming here. So regardless of what I had, you know, to do for today, I'm here in support of the city and the duty that we have for the community.
We, we appreciate you coming and being here today and being willing to speak to the issue. I think we all here can say that we would like to see the buses rolling again, and the sooner the better. And whatever it takes for you all to get them rolling, I think is what we would like to see. I don't know that you necessarily have to go down item by item today, but just know that we would like to get things resolved so that, you know, the workers can get back to work and picking up passengers. Mr. Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I appreciate you coming down at a moment's notice, because this just hit us this morning at, I believe, 901, 902, somewhere up in there. But I think it's, it's been said by a, a few of the union people that getting to the table to have a fair conversation will get them on the street. And, and if you can't get them to the table to have that conversation as a, as management, then that's an issue. So I think that to get them driving, then you need to say, state a time and place that we're going to sit down and have this conversation and find some resolve. That's all it's going to take, but I need you guys to do that. Because if you don't, my district is suffering, and I can't afford for my district to suffer. I need that resolved, please.
Yeah, we have no problem with that. We have no problem with that, but just so that you guys know, nobody has requested that we sit at the table and resolve any issues. I haven't had any communication with anyone.
Well, hopefully, he'll make, you can't talk. Hopefully, he will make a, or they will make a written request via email before he walks out of here, and hopefully, you can return a response really quickly as to when you guys are going to sit down and try to talk to make sure we get our drivers back on the street. And hopefully, they will copy Joe Snowden, the mayor, the chief of staff, and every council member up here. So we'll know that you guys are doing what it takes to, to serve the constituents of this city. I mean, we have a huge investment for you guys to be bickering over little things. We have people to serve. We need you to do that.
Right, right. I agree.
Well, let's get that done, please.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll.
No problem.
Uh, Mr. Dave, did you have some? Okay, appreciate, Mr. Penn?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Vice President, and thank you so much for coming down. What I'm hearing, you know, we, we're hearing this information. We can't speak of what hasn't been said, but like Mr. Carroll stated, we know what's need to get done. And so if you're stating that you're willing to do it, And so if you're stating that you're willing to do it, that means we have an expectation that tomorrow everybody are going to be driving and, and serving our citizens, um, in the city of Mobile. That's the expectation, um, and that you will be meeting with the, you know, a representative from the group and nobody will be, help be suspended, none of these things will be taking place. But we will move forward together as a wave. That I, I think when you think, you hear the name, a wave is, you know, it, it's, it's a continual movement, right? And, and let's continue to move together forward. And so today, sometimes we have disagreements. That's a part at, at, at city council. Believe me, we know about disagreements down here. And so, but we can, in the end, come together. And so hopefully y'all can come together and whatever we can do to support and let us know.
Yeah, no problem.
Again, thank you so much for coming. We really appreciate you taking the time. I know for everybody, this was kind of a last minute thing. So you can kind of consider this our, um, request and hope that you all will figure things out and get those buses rolling again first thing in the morning, if not this afternoon. Thank you so much.
Oh, no problem. Thank you.
Madam Vice President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Penn.
Do we have any other speakers in the presentation?
Uh, is that it?
Okay. I did want to go back and kind of address some things, um, before, um, I wanted to wait to, um, this, this was a very important matter. We usually don't waive the rules, but this was an emergency. Um, and so that's why I was glad that we was able to do that. There was some things that were shared and so I wanted to wait till we get done. I always, uh, welcome anybody to come into the table, anybody that know me. I love hearing from all speakers, even if when they disagree with me, I think it's very vital to have those conversations and be able to talk. If you can't have a conversation, that's a problem. You should be able to have a conversation even when you know it's a disagreement. So I always commend anybody from coming down. Uh, but I did have some things that I kind of wanted to, to kind of hit. Mr. Hill, um, came and he always come down and shared some things and some things that sometimes we disagree and sometimes we agree. But I do want to, I do agree with him stating that, um, he made some think, topics about supporting our district, supporting the city of Mobile and investing.
Mr. Penn, why don't you just pause for a minute?
Okay. Thank y'all so much for coming. All right. Thank you, Madam Vice President. Um, but about investing in our, our, our communities and, and districts. And I can't speak for everybody. I believe everybody do a great job, all our, our council members. But one of the things that these three years when I first came in, that was my ultimate goal, to make sure we invest in our districts. Uh, we have put more money in District One, um, than in a long time, investing in our communities. From even creating one of the first plans from the Tomerville Community Action Plan that we now have, that you can go and visit and see the things that were taking place by putting money into Highway 45, something that a lot of people thought that would never happen without taking money from our CIP projects. These are different things that are taking place in the city of Mobile, which I do agree that it's other things that we can probably work towards, but we got to do it together. It's certain things have to happen. We all agree that we know that we need a new civic center. That's important for the growth of any major city like the city of Mobile, but we have to find ways to be able to do that. And so, um, one of the things that, um, we, Ms. Mass came down and she shared about the tax, which she has the right to believe that. That's her, her opinion and she shared her concerns. But I did, I do want to share something that some people don't understand. That's only 1%, 1% of people in the city of Mobile go to the ho- those hotels, 1%. The civic center will have to be paid regardless. It's going to be paid. It has to be paid. And so only 1% of people who live in the city of Mobile will receive that particular tax. We have to find ways to grow our cities. So many people are going to Atlanta, they're going to Miami, they're going to all these major cities and they have these systems in place. But then when we look at Mobile and then we say, well, we don't have this, we don't have that, we can't market our city, why we don't have these festivals, why we don't have these different things, why people don't want to come because we don't have an international airport, we can't fly, the tickets cost too much. Well, these are all different resources that we can put in place to help grow our city. Now, this is not a tax to Mr. Hill or Ms. Mass, that's their opinion. They have a right to their opinion. But I just wanted to share my reason why supporting certain initiative and why I see that it's vital to move forward. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Penn. Uh, Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, ma'am. I, because there are no other speakers, I'd like to acknowledge, uh, the judges we have here in the, in the building, I'm sure, here just, uh, supporting the initiatives that we have to support the court, uh, on our agenda today. I want to acknowledge Judge Pipes, Judge Wyndham and Judge.
Judge Wright.
Uh, so, I'm sorry?
Judge.
Wright, Judge Wright, I'm sorry. Good to see y'all. Thank y'all for coming. Almost said Judge Boykin, so that was very.
Ordinance is held over. 34004, ordinance to amend Article Set Six of Chapter 34 Lodging Tax of the City Code of City of Mobile. And I have received a substitute which updates the dates of April 1st and June the 1st for effective date. 50005.
Please take that one separately. Yes, say it separately. So do we need, are we going to need an amendment?
Absolutely, you'll need an amendment.
Well, you, you've got the substitute.
Let's go ahead. So moved on 34004.
Second.
All right, discussion?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to move that the, uh, that the version on file in the clerk's office be substituted for this.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Okay, substitute is before us. The, the substitute is on the agenda, yes, sir.
So now we're, now we're, now we're voting on the substituted.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
No.
Opposed?
No.
50005, determine whether the Mobile Tourism Improvement District should be continued, modified or terminated.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. This is 60. Resolution.
Madam Vice President?
Yes, sir?
Don't find.
Um, I would just, I, I'd like to say that with respect to, uh, 34004, uh, which I supported and do support, I think, I think that, um, first of all, it's important to remember that this is a lodging tax. So this is almost completely paid by people who do not live in the city of Mobile, because the only way you're going to pay this tax is if you go check into one of the hotels in the city of Mobile. But secondly, this will generate significant additional revenue, which will allow us to do a number of different things, uh, that are important, uh, to help, to help the, uh, help the visitors, uh, center, to help the airport, to help pay off, uh, the, um, the new arena and to continue to help us devote significant resources to, uh, capital projects within the city of Mobile. All those things are very, very important. There are some things about this substituted ordinance that each one of us don't like. They're kind of different things that each one of us who voted for it don't like, but you don't always get exactly what you want when it comes to legislation. And I think there is a sufficient in here that is important that we get done, but even though there are some things in it I don't like, I was willing to support. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. Daves. Anyone else?
Madam Vice President?
Woods?
Um, yeah, I kind of echo and, uh, Councilmember Daves. Um, there, there's certainly both of these, there's things that I do not like. Um, and, uh, but I would encourage the Mobile Tourism Improvement District, just remind the, um, the hotelers that, you know, it is a, uh, it is a, encompasses the whole city. So there's other parks that, that are outside downtown that we need to definitely focus some of these funds on moving forward.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Resolutions held over. 01438, authorize agreement with Alabama Department of Transportation for I-10 Mobile Bridge and Bayway Project.
So moved.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
01439, authorize intergovernmental agreement with Mobile County Commission for the Mobile Arena Project.
A motion to lay over two weeks.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? All in favor of laying over for two weeks?
Aye.
All right.
Opposed?
If there are no objections, I'll take the remaining items together.
Okay.
01440, authorize agreement with Wayland Wildlife Services for nuisance beaver control. 01441, authorize amendment to agreement with GRW Engineers for Mobile Area Stormwater Mapping and Resiliency Pl- Planning Project. 08442, approve purchase order to Canon USA for digital scanning for municipal archives. 08443, approve purchase order to Tactical Electronics and Military Supply for Underdoor Cameras and Video Scope. 09444, allocate funds to recipients designated in the Helios Allocation Report. 21445, authorize contract with Thompson Engineering for citywide bridge inspection.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Consent resolutions being introduced, 09448 through 03475.
Moved away the rules for immediate consideration of these items.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
09448, transfer funds from District Two discretionary account to Parks Recreation Steals Multi-Purpose Room Account for Rock of Faith Missionary Baptist Church Anniversary Fee. 37449, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a special events retail liquor license for Callahan's Irish Social Club. 40, 450, 451 and 452 are declaring the structures at 2351 B Dixon Lane, 2906 Knoll Street, 1339 Basil Street and 40, 4453, 400 Lexington Avenue, public nuisances and ordering them demolished. 58, 456, assess cost removal of weeds, repeat weed lean group number 84. 60, 457 and 458 are approving award a special bonus to the officer of, of the month and to the officer of the month and to the officer of the month. Okay. 459, 60, 459, 460, 461 are determining appropriations to Gulf Coast Caribbean Carnival Association Questview Community Action Group, University of South Alabama, Jack Earls, serve a public purpose and approving payment. 03475, reappoint Robert Thomas, Freddie Stokes and R. Jeffrey Perloff as part-time municipal court judges.
So moved.
Second.
All right, there's been a move and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
40, 454 and 455 are declaring the structures at 1509 Alba Avenue and 4730 Knight Drive, public nuisances and ordering them demolished.
Move to table.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
CIP resolutions being introduced, 21473.
Uh, by council rules, this item will lay over one week.
Resolutions being introduced, 01462 through 31474.
I move to, uh, I move for immediate consideration of items 08464, 08465, 08467, 468, 469, 13471, 21472, 31474, the remainders to lay over one week pursuant to council rules.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Rules are waived?
08464, approve purchase order to Coastal Alabama Community College for EMS and paramedic, paramedic classes. 08465, approve purchase order to Gray Bar Electric for street light poles for Village of Spring Hill. 08467, approve purchase order to University of South Alabama for EMT certification courses. 08468, approve purchase order to the University of South Alabama for advanced EMT courses. 08469, approve purchase order to University of South Alabama for paramedic courses. 13471, authorized change order with geotechnical engineering testing for Mobile Civic Center Master Plan Improvement. 21472, authorized contract with Jaguar Consulting for Gulf Coast Explorium HVAC upgrades. 31474, authorize the mayor to apply, to accept from the Alabama Department of Transportation a fiscal year 2025 transportation alternative set aside program grant for sidewalk improvements along Oshil Road.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Announcements?
All right, I will start to my right, uh, Councilman Woods.
Uh, yes, ma'am, thank you. Um, uh, just to reiterate, I know, uh, again, some issues that we've had out in District Six, um, uh, spoke about it this morning during pre-council, I'm very aware, I received a lot of emails, uh, regarding signs on poles, um, and then for the city's enforcement and then also traffic along Cottage Hill. I'm very happy to say both of those, um, matters, um, since pre-council, we've discussed and the administration's definitely aware of that. So, um, I, I do just wanted to express, um, to, to the constituents in District Six that I, I hear and, um, uh, hopefully we'll start seeing, um, seeing, uh, some progress made over the coming weeks. Um, both of those, um, in different instances are, are, are very important for separate circumstances. Also, I, I did want to say, um, every, every morning I wake up and turn the news on and, um, uh, listen as I get ready for work. And obviously the, the, uh, news this morning for especially some local channels was around the nuisance control, um, that was on our agenda, while, uh, not a small thing, um, in, in no circumstance, every dollar matters. Um, but I, I would like to, and I know there was comment this morning, um, I had the opportunity, I guess, two weeks ago to pretty much tront through, uh, the majority of Milk House Creek in District Six, um, quite the hike, um, and, and along that way, uh, you know, saw several areas where, where beavers in this instance had, had taken up residence and, and, uh, and built dams. And, um, again, some of that's, uh, uh, you know, just natural occurring things, but tho- those are things, especially when it comes to city and stormwater management, um, that, that have to be handled. And, um, in this instance, uh, a lot of this is, you know, in, in, in District, some of this is in District Six and along those, out of Milk House Creek is ultimately the, at the end result, as a dam builds into a, as a beaver builds a dam, um, all across, uh, our systems, our tre- our tributaries, um, the ultimate consequence is flooding and, um, God help it if we have a large rainstorm and, and, you know, neighbors suffer from flooding that happens. So I, I just wanted to make a point that, um, while, uh, you know, animals exist, uh, you know, nuisance control has to, has to be maintained. And then, um, finally, I, I did want to say one thing on the, uh, Helios Alliance. Um, I, I know I mentioned it this morning in pre-council, but again, I just wanted to reiterate, thank you for, for working with the city of Mobile. Uh, it was very impressive to see how, uh, how you took all these partners that, uh, that applied with their various, uh, programs and, uh, were able to really encompass not just individual programs, but really kind of build something out. So, um, I just want to say thank you for working with us on that, um, thank you for doing that and, um, I'm looking forward to seeing the results of, of what you do. That's it. Thank you.
Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Uh, to my District Six colleague, I didn't know it flooded out there in District Six, man. You guys are pretty far uphill. There will be a District Two community meeting on March 25th at the West Side United Methodist Church on, uh, Mohawk, uh, our usual time, six o'clock. Uh, we will be discussing all of the, uh, new areas within District Two that's, uh, from Pleasant Valley around Magnolia Street, back over to Cottage Hill, down to Pond Hill. We'll be taking care of that area, uh, on that date. We'll be hearing your concerns, uh, we'll be addressing what we need to do and most of all, we'll be getting to know the people that live in that area. Uh, we'll also be talking about some of the things that are coming up in District Two in that area, also some of the things that are planned for the next three years. So if you would, please make sure that you attend that meeting and I look forward to[1787.11] So if you would, please make sure that you attend that meeting, and I look forward to seeing you guys.
All right. Councilman Daves? Councilman Penn?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I just want to give a big shout out to everyone that participated in the Trenton Gardens Heritage Parade this past Saturday. I had a great time, but the Police Department, MPD, as well as Fire Department, and really want to give a big shout out to Public Works. They did an amazing job coming and cleaning up our community. So hats off to the organizers. They even do, like after the parade, they go around to the different churches that's on the parade route and help clean up as well. It's a big family reunion parade. So many people come out from different places. So just hats off to all the departments that made that happen. And then April the 8th, we'll have our District One meeting in the Trenton Gardens community at the Dots Community Center. So we're inviting everyone out to come out. We will have more meetings lined up. You'll be receiving information about our District One meetings coming up for in all our communities, some of the new areas as well. But we will start in the Trenton Gardens community on April the 8th. Also, I want to give a big shout out to the Lady Bengals in District One. They won the state championship basketball team again. This is their second year in a row winning the state. So we definitely will be bringing them down and celebrate them. They are amazing young girls who doing some great things, serving all different parts of the city of Mobile. They come, come together and play. And at that particular location, they have four girls teams, and they made it to the state. So, so proud of them. And then I also want to give a big shout out. They don't live in, the school is not in the city of Mobile, but I think it's not just supporting the schools, but supporting young people. They're in the city of Pritchett, but Viagra High School won the state championship. And that was their first basketball state championship, so shout out to Viagra High School as well. So that's all I have. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. And Councilman Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Today, we reappointed three part-time judges. And I remember early on in this term, we were tasked with evaluating our municipal court. And we, as a city council, found that it would have, it was in the citizen's best interest to add two additional positions to our municipal court, one full-time judge and one part-time judge. Since that action, we have seen our court really click along and really do a fine job. And these three judges that we reappointed today in the part-time role, part-time roles, let's see if I can say these judges' names without botching them this time. Judge Bucky Thomas, Freddie Stokes, and Jeffrey Perloff. Thank you all for your willingness to serve our city, and thank you for doing such a great job. That's it, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. This evening, I am hosting a meeting for some of our newly annexed residents in the Kings Branch and Orchard Estates areas. It will be at six o'clock this evening at the grounds. We sent out postcards a couple of weeks ago, so we are looking for everyone to come out tonight and do a little checkup. It's been just over a year and a half since we annexed. So they've been through snow and holidays and other things. So it's a good time to follow up with them to make sure things are going well. If not, what are the concerns? What are the issues? And we'll be there to get everything and help them get it resolved as well. I also want to thank our MPD and all of the volunteers who came out to Mobile Terrace on Saturday. Of course, we moved the parades up a little bit because of weather conditions, and that threw some folks off. But we appreciate everybody participating and being there. Especially, my thanks go to the Shavers family. Joy Shavers was the grand marshal this year. She says this is her last parade, but thankfully, someone in the family is going to be taking over those duties. Also, to MPD, of course, for being out there to make sure everyone is kept safe and sound. And to the Public Works folks who have gone out to clean up, as Councilman Penn said. After the parades, there's usually a mess, and so we thank everyone for going out and doing the cleanup to get the neighborhood back in shape. I also, piggybacking with what Councilman Woods said, we've been sending in some photos of illegal signs. They are now, they were now getting a little brazen with putting them up, taking step ladders out to intersections and nailing them up onto street signs, making it harder for those who like to walk and take the signs down as they are out doing walking tours around the community. So thank you to the administration for taking a look at those and getting them down as quickly as possible. And just a reminder, that just because you've got a business does not give you the right to go nail a sign up about your business onto a city, a street sign or traffic light. Or place them in the right of way, yes. And we will be getting stricter with that and enforcing. And when we do get these signs, we are contacting the companies and writing them citations. So just be aware of that. Anybody else? Anybody from the administration? Mr. Woods?
Yes, Madam Vice President. First and foremost, want to thank the council for not only the reappointment of the judges, but also all of the support that you all gave during the Helios exercise. Our courts are moving faster and stronger in a deliberate way now. So I definitely appreciate both the full-time judges, the part-time judges, and the additional resources you all have provided. Also, want to say, just in reference to the wave, our paramount, it is paramount that we get our citizens back to being transported and taken care of. Just want to remind, so that doesn't go unsaid and we didn't sit here silently. Number one, I think in referencing the contract, you have to understand that if, if the wave is not servicing our citizens, they may be in breach. That is a conversation that we're going to have with them. Also, to the extent there was a walkout and people have to, you know, have shown up here, that is not a city issue. That is an employment issue that the union and their administration will have to discuss. But that, to the extent they have to deal with that, that's separate and apart from us. That is not an employment decision that will be weighed on by the council or by the administration. But we will be discussing with them getting our services restored to our citizens.
Mr. Mayor, did you have something?
Yes, ma'am, I do. I just want to clarify the record, and I certainly appreciate your vote on the tid and the lodging tax. Watching the body language of some people in the audience, they, when we say lodging tax, I think there's this belief that it has to do with where they live. Lodging tax only shows up on a hotel bill if you stay in a hotel. Nobody else pays that tax. So what we're doing, we're asking visitors, or we're going to have visitors that come stay in our hotels and motels to help us pay for the civic center, excuse me, the arena, and for the airport. So please understand that this is not a tax on the citizens of Mobile unless you go stay in a motel or a hotel. Other thing is regarding our debt, for twelve, almost twelve years, the twelve in November, all we've done is pay down debt. When I was elected in 2013, the debt of the city, which included the legacy debt for all the stuff that had been built, as well as the Police and Fire Pension Fund, was $435 million. $435 million. Within a couple of days, we will have completed the deal for borrowing $250 million. When we take all of our debt and we add that $250 to it today, our total debt will be $380 million. So twelve years after 2013, you know, we're getting ready to have a 200, really it's $300 million facility, and we're going to end up with less debt than what we had when we had, when we started 12 years ago. And so I want to applaud the council for what they've done to help us work toward being fiscally responsible, but also the supervisors and the line workers that realize that we had, you know, we had to tighten our belt to be able to do the things that we're doing. But we've probably never been in a better shape to be able to borrow this money and get this project done than we are today. So thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Daves?
I would just like to put an add on to what the mayor just said. Not only did we have more debt 12 years ago, or not only will we end up with less debt than we had 12 years ago after we do this bond issue, our ability to service that debt, our cash flow is far more than it was 12 years ago.
And Mr. Carroll?
Yeah, I've let this go on way too long. We have to remember how we obtained the ability to service the debt. And if it wasn't for the Jones administration and that one cent sales tax, then this windfall that we have would not exist. We said that we were in dire straits. We said that this city was desolate at that time, but the city couldn't have been desolate because it was still operating. But we must remember that if it wasn't for that one cent sales tax that maybe some of us didn't want, even tried to veto, we would not have this windfall.
Madam President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Daves?
I, 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 the one, the one, the one cent sales tax was certainly important. But, but I disagree with where the city was 12 years ago. The city had an, had, had an unassigned deficit of $4.5 million in the general fund. As the mayor just pointed out, we had significant debt. We were spending almost nothing on capital every single year. I know, because I rode around in the police cruisers that had 140,000 miles on it. The garbage trucks didn't work. The trash trucks didn't work. We were in a much worse position 12 years ago than we are today. Getting out, and the one penny had been in there for a number of years before, before, before that period of time. What, what did it was a rising economy and the ability to control expenses. That's what did it.
Madam Vice President?
Hang on, hang on, hang on. These are announcements.
Right. I was going to say, there is no provision within our rules that allow for debate in the announcements portion. With that, I make a motion to adjourn.
All right. All right. All in favor?